As far as the agenda goes for the April meeting, I anticipate about four items will be on the agenda. One of them is located on the table there. The Westmoreland County Community College has submitted a plan. It will be reviewed by the Planning Commission on April 2nd, and then we will review it at our meeting in April. We have a couple-
Will there be a public hearing?
No, just to basically lay a development plan. And again, they're on display here, and they'll be on display and available at Ann's office. Very similar to what we've seen up there with some minor modifications. We'll need to pass a resolution related to the disposition of records in the tax office. Correct. And other than that, I would like to work with the solicitor to draw up two resolutions. One recognizing the state champion hockey team for the high school, and the other would be related to employee recognition. We're beginning to recognize employees for years of service, and we're instituting that. And then lastly, I'm not sure if it's by resolution, but we've got a request for a handicap spot on Avenue B. We do it by resolution, and we pick it up by order. So it's pretty late for the agenda unless there's other things the council has on the agenda.
No, I was just glad that we got that for Amtrak to keep Pennsylvania.
Now, how about that? It's down to 3.8 million, and the state agreed to pay Amtrak 3.8 to continue the service instead of the 5.7, I think was the request. What I wanted to do tonight, besides, of course, you have a copy of a report, I wanted to invite the gentleman from Latrobe Unity Parks and Rec to, again, help promote, once again, the need for volunteers for Playland. So gentlemen, have at it.
Thank you. We do have a couple, I don't know where we're going.
Just put it up here, because that way Jack can see it over there. Okay, that's what I'm saying.
I guess we can block you, Alex. My name's Craig Shetek, I'm the program director for Latrobe Parks and Rec. This is Brandon Simpson. He used to be the program coordinator for Latrobe Unity Parks and Rec, and now he just moved on to county parks, your title?
Program coordinator.
Program coordinator, so he's still gonna be helping out with Playland. We do have a couple copies, give a couple people what we're actually doing and looking to do. Our big need is volunteers for Playland. We need 250 per day. We're starting on April 23rd, which was Tuesday, is the first community build day. Kennametal is actually having their staff and family and friends come, and they're actually handling that whole day. So that's nice, the Tuesday's taken care of. But Wednesday, we're in need of some volunteers.
That's the 24th.
That, Wednesday the 24th is what it's, yes. I need 40 in the morning, and we need 65 in the evening. And the way the shifts actually work, the morning shift is from 8 o'clock to 12, and then from 12 to 12:30, we'll be taking a break for lunch. And then we'll start back up to build at 12:30 to 4:30. 4:30 to 5 is dinner, and then 5 to 8:30 is the evening shift. Yes, so you have about a half hour, maybe 20 minutes, so cracking whip down. Cracking whip down there in Playland. April 25th, which is a Thursday, we're looking for 25 in the morning, 40 in the afternoon, and 65 in the evening. Friday, April 26th, we're looking for 15 in the afternoon, 45 still in the evening. Saturday, the 27th, 40 in the morning, 30 in the afternoon, and about 40 in the evening. Evening is definitely what we're lacking. Sunday, the last day of the build, 70 in the morning, and 75 in the evening. So Sunday, we definitely need some volunteers. Couple things that are going down there. Nice donation from 84 Lumber. We donate a lot of our materials, composite wood, pressure-treated wood, and non-pressure-treated wood, so we do thank them. Also, J.G. Howzers, located off Unity Township off of 30th. They're donating all their time. They actually demoed it for us, so we thank them for helping us out there. Kennametal, like I said, UPS also is sending a lot of their staff. They actually volunteered, given us a tool trailer for us too, so we're helping, we're glad that they're helping out. Latrobe Steel is sending some of their employees also for two shifts, so we thank them. Also, the city, I've been working with Alex and Jared, and Joe has actually, we donated a couple dumpsters for us and some snow fence, so we thank them also. We're also meeting with Schulteis and Ramparts Security. We're putting some security cameras down there. Brandon and I set up a, we're gonna set up a temporary camera just to see what we can actually start looking at, and that was pretty, pretty cool. On Friday, we set it up, and even in pitch dark, you can actually make out an image and almost a face depending on how close it is. So we're gonna be putting a few of those LED cameras down there, so we're pretty excited about that. And also some lighting depending on how many cameras actually go down there to try to light it up enough to secure it, but not enough to have the kids down there trying to squeeze out another hour or two hours playing down there, because the park does close in the dusk. We do have some fundraisers going on. We also are on Facebook if you want to visit us. But we do have a fundraiser at Valley Dairy right down here on 981 on Wednesday the 27th. So anything that you go by down there, 15% comes back to Playland, which is nice.
Did you say Valley Dairy?
You meant Dairy.
Uh, I mean Dairy Queen, Dairy Queen, thank you.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what 981 was. Okay.
Okay, Dairy Queen, so excuse me. That's on the 27th. Also, we're selling T-shirts. They were designed, we put two designs together from local elementary schools. They did a little art contest, so we are selling those. So you can also visit our website, they're on there, that's a fundraiser. Also, Buy Brick is also a fundraiser. That is also on our webpage and on Facebook. And that is, depending on the size of the brick, is the cost anywhere from 75 to 250 to 251. You can actually put your business logo on there, and they are guaranteed for life. So if something starts rubbing off, you start losing that, you will send us a new one, free charge. So-
I'll turn around.
Yeah, Alex has been kind of rotating this. You can kind of see the plans. On your left is the actual ideas we got from the children at all four elementary schools, Bagley, Mountain View, LES, and CET, and then also some ideas from Valley out in the linear. So we also sold them in the hallway. But really, what they sold us is all on the board now. So their ideas, their dreams of their playground are becoming a reality, so we're pretty excited about that. We do have some cool features, some different type of swings. Anybody can access them, all this is gonna be ADA accessible. We're also gonna have a zip line, which was the number one thing that the kids wanted down there, 30-foot zip line that's been coming off the bow of the pirate ship, which is pretty cool. Not actually, but it looks like it, instead of coming off of the bow. Brandon, you wanna have anything?
No, just a couple things on volunteers, just for volunteer information. We will provide childcare during those shifts. Children 3 to 13. We'll have leaders down there doing different activities. I know the fire police are coming down. Some police officers with Rocky the Dog will be down as well in the evenings, putting on some programs. So for anybody that's interested in volunteering, we will be providing childcare. During the lunch and the dinner, like Craig had said, lunches and dinners will be provided. We're very fortunate to have, we have about 90% of the meals donated for the entire week as of right now, so a great, great donations from local businesses and restaurants, so.
Did you guys make any skill levels for volunteers, like if you don't have, you don't have to be-
No, you don't have to be skilled. Really, there's a simple question they'll ask you, if you feel comfortable cutting with a circular saw on a, on a straight line. And if you say you do, you get a certain name tag. If you say you don't, you get a certain name tag. And that way, when we break up into groups in the morning at, a little before 7, we'll try to break the groups up, so many skilled, as they're called, and so many unskilled. And then there'll be a team of 15 or so, and we'll actually take them down on the site. There'll be eight to 10 captains down there per day. That captain has their jobs. They'll have blueprints, they're actually overseeing. So like, one will be, let's just say, put it into swings. Another one will be building the treehouse, or the pirate ship, or the shaky bridge, or anything like that. So each captain will have their job, so it's not someone new coming in every day and trying to build the pirate ship.
What type of tools do you need the people to bring that are coming down there?
Very good.
Saws, drills, things like that?
Tools are actually pretty much all taken care of by other donors, J.G. Howzers, us, working with Latrobe Steel, UPS, and Kennametal. Really have donated a lot of the, a lot of the tools also. The tools, with they go, a trailer coming from UPS, it'll have shelves in there, everything will be inventoried, all the blades and old bits. If someone donates their, lets us borrow their tool, we'll put a new saw blade in and a new bit. So after the build, you come home with almost a new bit and a new blade on your saw. Everything has to stay down in the trailer, so that way we don't have any safety issues. People aren't coming in and out with anything. Now, if you wanna bring your own gloves and safety mask, or earplugs, or your, what do you say, tool belt, and your level or something like that.
I was thinking like chalk saw.
Anything like that will be down there already.
Okay.
Yes, it'll be down there.
And anything that, I'm sorry, anything that is donated tool-wise like that, we have to make sure that it still has all the safety guards and everything like that still attached to it, so.
Yeah, so the week prior, when we're actually getting the site set up with the tool trailer and the tents, and getting all that set up, we'll actually be taking inventory of those tools, because they need all, like Brandon said, all the safety guards and stuff. So if we have to reject anything, just, also on there, if you do donate any of your tools, and they got accepted by us, and then for some reason the motor gets burned out or something, then we will replace it for you.
If we donate them, the tools and that, we can get them back then?
You'll get them back, yes.
Oh, great.
Yeah, you'll get them back, yes. We shouldn't say donate, we should say borrow.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so anything that we borrow, then that following Monday, everybody can come down there that lent us the tools, and then they can get them back. Rosie?
Yeah, are you available tomorrow? Alex and Joe are coming to a meeting that we're having at Latrobe Steel at 11 o'clock to talk about our, our, something that we're doing, but maybe if you could come at 11, and we can answer some of those questions.
Sure.
Craig, these number of volunteers you need for shift is indicated on this form. Is that the total number of people that will be working that shift, or is this the ones you need?
That's why needs, that's what our needs.
Eighty-ish.
Oh, it's eighty-ish.
It's about eighty-ish shift, yes, give or takes on. So that's actually what our wish list is, what we're looking for.
Because you know that some people are gonna get sick, or something's gonna happen.
Or some people just show up.
Right, yeah, so we're trying to stay as ordinary as possible, as possible. Also, we need to let Lee Archin know, here's my number, so he can kind of plan his day out, his workday.
What shift are you really short on?
It's evening shifts. Evening shifts, yeah, especially that's, and that's Sunday morning.
Yeah, that's Sunday?
That's Sunday morning. So, and we'll be done, Lee told us, what, 6 o'clock? We should go say all our thank yous and cut the ribbon, and let the kids start playing on Sunday evening, so.
And our goal is to have, hopefully, every city employee do one shift somehow or another. If we're great, if council can find a way to do that as well. It's gonna be something for 20 years, we've been talking about.
So you need people by 8:30 maybe? Yes, yes.
Where do people register?
You can sign up, actually, you can go to our website, it has a link. Also, you can actually email me, which is craig@latroberecreation.org. So you can go to our website, the Facebook page, there's places that you can track me down.
Worst-case scenario, call the Parks and Rec office?
That's right. I can call Parks. Any other questions?
Oh, you did a good job on TV for your interview. I saw that Friday night.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, thank you.
Is it all right if we keep the board?
Yeah, you keep the board. There are two copies up here too, extras.
At 11?
Rosie, tomorrow?
11 at Latrobe Steel. Yeah, go to the main gate guard and ask for me.
Okay.
Is that bad? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I have something, Alex, my old- Jim, guess what I'm gonna ask you about?
Yeah, the crosswalks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Got way late on that, and the reason I got way late on it, just for a few weeks, is that I have another statute of limitations which I had to meet for the fire department. So they have some issues with insurance carriers, so I had to prepare writs of summons and get that taken care of. That's been done, so now I can get back with that. But that, that deadline for the fire department is-
Do we have a deadline, or we face a deadline with these, with these crosswalks? How many years is it been now?
We always have deadlines, but the statute of limitations, as far as I know, is six years of construction or so.
We're approaching that.
Well, six years from when you discover that there is a problem-
A flaw?
And that they were in fact-
Yeah, a week after they were installed.
And I brought up in January, Greg, when I first got in, when I brought it up, Kenny, so we're looking at three years.
Yeah. Where were the engineers at? I don't wanna react this again, this is, this is- I just wanna see some resolution. And the garbage, Alex, I'm presuming you prepared the specs?
Working with the committee. We prepared a draft.
You worked with Michelle Muster too, Daniel?
Correct. And we're doing the corrections. The goal is to, by midweek, maybe next week, advertise, so that in mid-May, the bids wouldn't be received, so that at the May agenda meeting, you'd be able to review those bids, and at the June meeting, vote potentially on, on a contract.
June, possibly, too.
Correct.
The, you know, I missed the last council meeting. It wasn't on the agenda, which surprised me when I, when I read next day online that this was going to be put out the bid. I was surprised, frankly. I couldn't understand the rush to do this. And my understanding is, if we do do what the committee intends to do, we're gonna be bringing garbage from elsewhere into our transfer station?
No.
No?
Potentially?
Quite potentially, maybe. It's not what they're gonna do down there. But we're giving them back, we're giving them, we're doing the back area, just like we're running that back there, because they're gonna be taking our garbage.
So they could bring garbage from other places back there? There's nothing to prevent them from doing that?
They're gonna do, at the end of DEP permit law.
You mean without seeking modifications to our-
They're gonna have to go there first.
They're gonna have to seek modifications.
If they don't give it to them, then they can't do it.
And the DEP permit is, that's our permit.
Actually, it would be us that would have to go to DEP to seek modifications, not them, because it's our permit.
There is, there is a, we discussed that in the meeting, and there is a provision in there that does say that if they wish us to seek a modification, that the modification cannot eliminate or get rid of anything that's been grandfathered. We have many things that have been grandfathered on our permit, or that it would create an additional burden on the city. If that's the case, we can reject the modification.
Is that the road down the other end down there, they have to-
Yeah, I mean, the point, the point being is, you know, they may want, whoever the contractor is, they may want certain modifications, as long as they don't harm us. But if it causes a problem with any grandfathered provision that we have had, or if it causes a problem with anything in the future, we have the right to reject those. And that's, that's a big concern, and we're trying to address it in these specifications, is protection of our permit. They have a big concern.
It's all aligned in there for, you know, there are a lot of, for our protection of our permit and stuff.
Well, you know, one thing I will say, the easiest way to protect it is not to modify it in the beginning if it's gonna cause harm.
Well, let me ask you this-
But if it's modified and causes harm, then we gotta look to them, and that becomes messy.
Yeah, then we're back in court.
Yeah, yeah.
And paying for court fees. Can you, can you put something in there that prevents modification?
Well, there's a provision that says if it would affect any, any provision that has been grandfathered,
Right.
If it would cause any detriment to the city, we don't have to submit for that modification. So it's right there in the get-go.
Well, this contract, as it is being bid, may require us to seek modifications, is this correct? I mean, the contract as it is being bid presently, under our current DEP, our, our permit, would the companies that are interested in bidding this contract be able to fit within the parameters of our current permit?
Right now, if it do anything, any updates of anything is all their cost. It's right there in the specids and stuff like that.
No, I'm saying, is, is the contract that is being bid, does it come with a proviso that permits these companies to seek modifications through us in order for them to gain the contract?
If they need it during the export, they're gonna have to open a lot.
Okay, if they don't need modifications to our permit, is that one of the specs?
Yes.
There's no need to modify our DEP permit, Alex, is this?
We did not in this specification request them to spell out any anticipated needs for permit modification. So there may be a hauler, let's say, who simply is giving us a price for our estimated number of pulls, which would allow us to stay within, you know, our current permit. So we didn't ask them, at least at this, until this point, to tell us, you know, what's your plans into the future. But I would imagine you'd be able to gauge from the prices that they are giving you, or, you know, some of the expectations where they're going. A permit modification isn't something you can do in six months.
Right.
So, you know, it's something that could take a couple of years even. It might be in the year three of a 10-year, a five plus five, you know, 10-year total bid, before they even get the ability to increase the traffic or tons or whatever.
And the residents that live there, even though they're not Latrobe residents, would have an impact on them.
If it's a major modification, it would require a hearing. And Joe, I don't know if a minor mod requires a hearing as well.
No, but a major would.
A major would require a hearing.
What would constitute a major and what would constitute a minor?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question.
And, and, and is it reasonable to, is it reasonable to ask them, the bidders?
To spell out their intentions?
What is there, I mean, obviously, there's a business plan here. Obviously, you know, they want two and a half acres of our property for a reason. And I'd wanna know what that reason is, because there's gotta be a business plan here for the next five years as to what they wanna do. So I don't want, I mean, we can't go into this thing blind. I mean, if it's a question of, are we bringing other people's garbage in here? Do we want other people's garbage going across our roads, you know, and through our town, and things like that? Those are the kind of things that I think are important to know before we say, I mean, basically, we'd be saying, yeah, for 10 years. We're talking 10 years, right?
It's a five plus five.
Five plus five, okay.
It's an option. Basically, we're asking them for a 10-year bid, with the understanding that that's-
So at least they have to have a five-year plan, and they, and we oughta, we oughta be able to have, have knowledge of that plan, because otherwise, I think it's irresponsible for us to not know what we're getting ourselves into.
One other thing regarding these, the bid specs, are we going to be including totes in this big bid package?
As they are prepared now. The citizens of Latrobe will be able to do, or take advantage of, single-stream recycling, and utilize the bins.
We don't have recycling totes.
Yeah, but we'll-
They would utilize bins.
We will have-
No. They'll be able to-
Like you had before.
Why? Why not totes?
Because of the floors that are sitting up there in that building.
It makes sense, and every other municipality in the whole country that's not in Latrobe-
Who pays for the totes? Do we, or do the garbage?
Basically, the customers will be paying for it ultimately, you know, in their bill. So it would be part of the total price.
Well, why can't we bid enough with totes? Let's, let's, this is 2013 there, gentlemen.
And if you listen to the public, that's what they want. They're tired of these bags and stickers.
Older people don't want the totes, they're talking about-
It's not true. That's Richard.
Well, you know, I can say, you heard this, I heard that.
Why can't we bid this off for totes?
More people have, more people have-
This contract runs out.
So like I said, I don't want to discuss it. Take your notes here, if you don't like the bid comes out, you don't bid on it. You go, no against it.
And that's what the people want, because the people, how many times have we heard about these bags? And senior citizens have as much a hard time carrying a 30-pound bag, 35-pound bag in the garden.
In other words, baby, you're telling me we're gonna have single-stream recycling without totes?
We've done it how many years?
We've never had single-stream.
We've had the little bins.
We've never had single-stream recycling.
What was you talking about, Alex? You had the bins, they come in, and they throw the garbage up there in the garbage all the time.
So now people are gonna still have to take their cardboard-
Cardboard in their newspapers.
I'm not gonna complain about it.
What's that?
I'm not gonna have nobody complain about it. Never heard.
You don't get it, do you? You get a tote, you put all your recyclables in the tote, you drag it out to the curb, and it all gets dumped. You don't have to, I have to drag my newspapers up to the Ludser Fire Department? I have to take my cardboard up to the, up to the city transfer station, and my cans and bottles go in my recycling bin? All three of those, all four of those glass, plastic-
They take all our cans down to our fire hall down there and throw it in the big camp, because they wanna get it to somebody else. They can set it there, they can pick up recyclable.
No, why can't we just join the, the, the modern world and put single-stream recycling totes in every resident's house? Why can't we do that?
I don't see nothing wrong with it, it is. It's been working out, it's been working out, nobody's had no problems with it.
You don't think this is an improvement? You don't think having one tote for all your recyclables? You cut down on your garbage fills, you cut down on the trash collection, and you make it convenient for everybody?
Plus, it's very green.
It's-
And if you're worried about senior citizens, they don't have the accessibility all the time to take their papers here and take their, take their cardboard here. And if you're truly worried about the senior citizens, then this is much more affordable for them. It reduces their garbage. We're not doing single-stream recycling, that is why you're telling me, Alex, in this bid. Because you can't do single-stream recycling with those little totes. You're gonna have garbage blown, you're gonna have paper and, and cardboard blown all over the place, because there's no lids on those little things.
I've never seen, I've never seen that over a place, I've never seen that yet. You know?
You've never seen a recycling bin blown all over the street? You've never seen recyclables blown all over the street?
I seen up in Union Township, they have their totes out, and they have three or four bags of garbage around it.
But I don't understand why-
Yeah, why are you checking this?
Why are you talking about our bitch, and having to have garbage guy all here?
Because the material he wants to use doesn't-
No.
Am I right?
About what?
What, we're discussing this bid there, and then also we have a garbage hauler here.
What's it, we're not, we're not seeing a thing. It's a public meeting, we're talking about the special thing.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we're not discussing-
Look, I see, I see the totes, I see the totes all the time up at their Union Township and everything else, with garbage bags around and everything else. You have people come from Union Township and Dairy Township, go up to our transfer station, pay $8, earn 200 fines, and it comes to 80 bucks in a whole year due to garbage, and they burn everything else, and they're traveling on our roads with the garbage and everything else, like you just said.
What's this have to do with single-stream recycling?
But that's one of the arguments, I don't think-
There's no argument against it.
Vote for it when it comes up.
No, no, we're being short-sighted, and you're talking about a garbage, somebody representative of, of company in the hauling business. I question you, baby, I question you, buddy. I question you.
Who am I doing this for?
Everybody in this town knows.
Oh, my, I haven't heard it. I haven't heard it.
I question your motives.
Okay, question my motive.
Let's move on there.
Our report submitted.
Are my reports submitted and if you have any questions?
Me? I know, baby.
We all know, Dave.
We all.
Don't let them miss. I have nothing.
I made my point.
Thank you. It's my, I figured if I put something spring out, maybe it'll.
There is, yeah, maybe tomorrow.
I want to ask a question.
We don't have to adjourn because it's not a meeting, so we're not.
No, we don't have to adjourn. Jim, did you want, we're just, anybody sitting down.
Beg your pardon?
Where's Donna? Do you ever?
No, I don't, I don't have anything up my mind. Just a second. Go ahead.